For the record. Can I have, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of the last meeting? And does anybody have any comments, changes, corrections, anything? If not, I entertain a motion to accept them. Have a motion?
I'll say it.
Thank you. Motion's been offered to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ferring?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
I'm staying.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to make sure that I was not here last month, so I understand.
Um, public address. I don't think we have any. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on any of the, on anything that's not already on the agenda tonight? Either of the two issues? Nope? Okay, cool. Not have any public address then? And we'll move on to item number four on the agenda, final development plan. This is case ZA 2011-04, First Financial Bank, 3,600 block Springdale Road, part of the, an outlot with, with Northgate Mall. Staff, you have a presentation, please?
Yes. The purpose of this action tonight is to determine if this proposed final development plan is in keeping with the approved preliminary plan and with provisions of the Colrain zoning resolution. This was initiated by Sandy Tenenfeldt with 4K Places Architecture, K4 Places Architecture, representing the property owner, T. Northgate Pads, Ohio LLC. The process for approval of a final development plan is that there's a submission of a preliminary development plan. It's referred to Hamilton County Planning Commission. They make a recommendation back to Colrain Planning Commission. This planning commission holds a public hearing on the preliminary, recommends it to the Board of Trustees. If the Board of Trustees approves it, it is changed on the zoning map to a planned or a PD classification. This one is a business development, so it's a PDB zone. Then, as final development plans come in, they can either come in all at once or done in phases. This particular development plan has been done in phases for its finals. This is the sixth of six outlots that were approved as part of the preliminary. This particular preliminary was actually a major modification of a very old development plan for Northgate Mall, and it called for the six out parcels, a movie theater addition to the mall, and also HH Greg addition to the mall. I believe the parking structure may have been included in that. I'm not sure if that preceded this or not. In any event, the preliminary development plan that you have on the screen is known as Outlet Number Five. I think I said Six, but, and it was designated as a financial institution, roughly the same size as the building that you'll be looking at tonight. The access to the parking lot is roughly in the same location as well. The only difference, the major difference in concept is that the parking and the building had been flipped, basically. The parking is now closer to Springdale Avenue, the building closer to the parking lot of Northgate Mall. This is showing the outline of the site overlaid on an aerial photograph. The staff report notes that there are 86 parking spaces in this particular area. And it's almost entirely paved impervious surface. The new development will have a significant amount of unpaved landscape area, grass added into it, as long as, as well as a substantial reduction in the amount of parking. This is a view from Springdale Avenue, looking in towards the site. The box is roughly the location where the building would be. This is taken from the driveway of what will become the Kroger Marketplace Development. These are a couple of street view scenes. The top one shows Cheddar's, which is the outlot to the east, and also in the background is the Noodles and First Watch Building. To the bottom is the strip shopping center containing the Goodyear. Now, as soon as Goodyear's new store on Springdale Avenue is completed, this shopping center slated for complete removal and replacement with Kroger Marketplace. But this will be directly across the street. This is the site plan, showing the building, location, and the parking. Drainage currently for this site simply goes back into the main parking lot of, of Northgate Mall, and that is the anticipated drainage for this site, although there'll be, again, a lot less impervious surface to be draining. We have a lighting plan that was provided. This also includes four decorative light fixtures along Springdale Avenue that will match the light fixtures that go the rest of the way around Northgate Mall and other new developments in the area. Just a reminder, this is what the street lamps look like that will be across the front of the First Financial Bank. There'll be a grass area, actually, it'll be quite a bit wider. It'll be 15 feet wide at its narrowest, and then it widens out to about 20 feet wide. And as suggested in our staff recommendation, or actually required in the code, there would be shade tree plantings within that grass strip area. As another sort of sidebar, the overhead utilities are scheduled to be buried underground in this section coming up this spring, so that will get rid of a lot of the overhead visual clutter in this section. Floor plan of the building, it's fairly basic. A majority of their, the customer work, as I understand, goes through the drive-through, although there is a teller counter on the inside of the building, can be accessed through the parking, private offices, conference room, et cetera. I've cut off the drive-through from this, basically, to fit it on the screen. Exterior elevation drawings. This does meet the architectural design guidelines for things like wall offsets, breaks, roofline variations, et cetera, materials. In this particular one, it sort of accents, there's a graphic on the top, which will actually be facing the mall, that's the rear of the building. We went back and forth as to whether that was a sign or not, and it was determined that it's actually not considered a sign, it's simply artwork. Probably too much information, but the fine point is, if you have artwork that depicts the nature of the business, say, you know, they're depicting people doing financial transactions or something directly banking-related, that becomes a sign. But if it's something like this, that is somewhat neutral, not considered a sign. So that factors into our computation of how much sign area is allowed. You'll notice, though, that the bottom elevation is the side that would be facing Springdale Road, and they have signage on that elevation. But they're also showing signs on the east and west elevation. They're somewhat smaller than the main sign. All of the sign, the sign area allowed is based on the street frontage, which is in your staff report, it's 70-some square feet. All of these signs combined fall under that maximum amount, but they're asking for flexibility to allow them to apply that sign area to different sides of the building. This is sort of a 3D view of what the building would look like. We have a landscape plan included in your packet. It meets the, the guidelines. There is one thing that I worked with the owner about. You'll note that the sidewalk along Springdale Road currently terminates right at the corner of this driveway. What they will be doing is continuing that driveway all the way back to the south side of their site to tie in with the parking lot of Northgate Mall. There's a similar sidewalk on the opposite side of the driveway. Also, currently on both sides of that drive entrance, where the traffic signal is on Springdale Road, there's a row of trees on both sides of the road, and they're going to retain those trees and keep them so that they match what's on the opposite side of the driveway. And then there's additional trees throughout the site.
Just so we're clear, the sidewalk you're talking about runs along the entrance from Springdale into the mall?
Yeah, where it's, I'm looking, there's my arrow. Where it says Mall Entrance Drive, it's, the sidewalk is new. Actually, I should have pointed that out in the earlier aerial photo, that there was one on the opposite side. And then there's details of the foundation plantings around the building, and also plantings around the new monument sign. The new monument sign meets all the setback in height requirements for the zoning code. Most of the site complies with the zoning code. There's a couple of issues that need to be addressed. Based on the square foot of floor area, they're required to have 11 parking spaces. They're allowed 10% above or below. 10% is only 12 parking spaces. They're proposing 29 parking spaces, so they would need a variance for 17 extra spaces for this particular building. We've had conversations with both the bank. The bank really does not need 29 parking spaces, and this is more a dictate of the mall management, and actually, some of the concerns of the major anchors of the mall. One of their, one of their concerns is, as we build these outlots, it increases the demand for parking, but it also reduces parking. The converse, the flip side to that is that the mall was built with far excessive amount of parking that it ever needed to start with. So, there's always a need for security in the mall, that they want to make sure that there's always this perception that there's more than ample parking space, because if it looks too congested, it could be detrimental for customers. Given also that there's shared access, shared cross-easements among all of these out parcels with the mall, we're seeing this as more of a positive, because we're reducing the total amount of parking spaces. And I think that amounts in your staff report as well. It's 50-some spaces that are being reduced by this particular development. So the fact that we have 17 extra is not a particular concern for staff. There's a requirement that when we have parking adjacent to a street, that there be shade trees planted between the parking and the street for every 35 feet of frontage. That would equate to seven trees along this particular frontage. Again, I've talked to the applicant, and they seem not to have a problem with doing those. The requirement isn't that they space them at exact 35-foot intervals. They have the ability to sort of clump or arrange those however they see fit. This is the issue about the wall signage. They're allowed 72 square feet. They're asking to be able to apply that 72 square feet to multiple sides of the building, but still keep within their maximum allowance. In that the building is viewed from multiple sides, and is part of a unified shopping group. Staff really doesn't see a problem with that type of arrangement. Just looking at the other outlot buildings around the mall, I haven't tracked down all the variances or whatever, but most of those buildings do have signs on multiple sides. Staff's recommendation is for approval of this plan, under the condition that the seven additional trees be planted on Springdale Road, and that the location of the decorative street scape linings be moved to the back of the sidewalk on Springdale Road. Also, in terms of variances, that flexibility be granted in the placement of the walk signed, wall signs per the plan submitted, and that 12, 17 additional parking spaces be allowed. One item I did, I skipped over, but I talked to the applicant after the plans were submitted. I'll get back to the elevations. When approaching the drive-through bays, two of the bays are going to be for teller windows. One is for an ATM. Just thinking ahead, I suggested that they're probably going to need some directional signs above those bays to label which bays are which. And they proposed back several small signs that equated to, I think, less than four square feet. That still fell within their 72-square-foot allowance. So just to let you know, that's a slight difference. This is not a public hearing tonight, since one was held with the preliminary development plan, but we do have representatives with the applicant and the audience, if you have questions.
Just one question before we get to the applicants. You mentioned that the monument sign fell within all the zoning codes and all?
Right.
I recall, I think there's kind of an overall signage plan for Northgate in general that covers everything, so that there's like shapes and surfaces and colors. Does this monument sign fall within those? And maybe the applicant will cover that, I don't know.
Yeah, quite honestly, I was not aware that there was such a thing when I went through the files.
Correct, okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, if the applicant would like to come up and make a presentation, that'd be great. The applicant here? Ah, great.
I'm Sandy Tenenfeldt with K4 Architecture, and really Marty covered basically everything, but I can address, I think, maybe a little bit to the ground-mounted sign.
Okay.
I'm not aware of anything in writing, but just from driving around the site and knowing what we're going to install, we pretty much will be matching what's already out there. It's very similar in style to the one that's at McDonald's right now.
Okay.
It is just a low, it's, sorry, I don't have my glasses on, six feet tall. It's about 12 inches deep, lit from, internally lit, both sides. And that's, it's pretty, it's a pretty simple, straightforward, standard sign.
I just know that, over time, as we've done all these outlots and as the mall has gone through its reconfiguration, we've tried to keep similar signage throughout, as far as, you know, color, style, texture, feel, you know, just, just so that it has that same concept throughout the mall. So, I'm not saying it has to be identical.
Right.
And I can't recall what we might have done for McDonald's.
I was just using that as example, because we have the yellow, a similar yellow. We can work with staff also just to kind of show pictures before we actually put it up and make sure that it fits within everything, too.
I think that's reasonable.
We'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Smith, do you have any questions for the applicant or staff?
Yes. Just so I'm clear on it, what's, what's going to be nearby? What, what businesses are going to be nearby the bank?
Well, the businesses that are there are still going to stay there, so the mall will be on the south side of us, Cheddar's will still be on the east side of us, and then across the street will be the new Kroger superstore. It is a superstore, correct? I'm not sure about the other two small buildings. I don't know if those are going to stay or not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anything will change there.
Basically, almost directly across from where Kroger is going to be?
Yes, we're right at that light, that intersection, that Kroger's entry will be at.
Okay, do you think there will be any traffic congestion with the signage?
Well, our entry is actually in the mall, so we, you'll have to go into the mall to get into our entry, into our entrance, so it'll be no different than the entry into the mall right now.
And you're coming off of Springdale, correct?
Right at that light.
And Kroger, no, beyond Springdale?
On the other side.
On the other side, at the light.
There's no ingress or egress under Springdale Road?
Correct. Correct. The only way you can get into our site is to fully go into the mall parking lot and get off of the entry drive into the parking lot. So I don't think we're going to have any issues with Krogers or anything, no.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Brady?
While that visual was up, Mr. Kohler, there is on, in your section noted or identified as other, number one, about those two remaining parking spaces there to the west of?
Right.
Is that something that we should mandate in here, or is that going to be worked out or what have you?
I, I talked to First Financial about that. They're, it's a little awkward, because it's not on their property. It's on the mall property. I believe that the mall would be more than willing to concede those two parking spaces. It just seems like they're very awkward, and they will be backing, well, even now, they currently back into sort of the main traffic lane for Northgate Mall.
The mall has conceded those two parking spots. I apologize.
Oh, okay.
I thought I forwarded that email to you, but they have conceded on those two.
Another question for our applicant, the framed graphic message area?
Yes.
Is that electronic, or is that?
No, it's stationary.
Stationary?
Stationary.
And that will be changed from time to time?
They typically don't change it. It's typically the one that goes up, the only time it gets changed, if anything happens to it. God forbid graffiti or, you know, anything damages it, it usually just stays there.
Okay, all right, so that's not electronic in any?
No, it is not electronic, and it is not internally lit either.
Okay, so it's only visible during, really visible during the daylight hours, then?
Mm-hmm, and then whatever, all fall light is around.
Okay. The rooftop units, I was trying to determine, I couldn't quite make sure, but are they sufficiently screened?
They are, they are completely screened by our parapet.
Is there any allowance for a dumpster area?
No, we do not put a dumpster outside. Due to the nature of the business, we hold everything inside. When Rumpke pulls out, they take the trash cans out, empty them, and they go right back inside the building.
If you note on this, I asked the same question, too. There's a trash room designated, and Rumpke simply comes periodically. They have access to that room, takes the trash, leaves. So there's never any trash outdoors.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Ferring?
I have one more question. I just have one question on the lighting. You said that on Springdale Road, it's one of the lighting consistent with the other frontage, but in the parking area? I have to go through my package, and I don't love this drawing or the other, because it looks, and I was just confused on the lighting in the parking lot.
I don't know what he?
If there is any lighting?
There is lighting in the parking lot, yes. We have, I believe it's three fixtures in the parking lot? I have to look again to double-check that. Those are not the exact same fixtures. Is it four? Thank you, Marty.
Yeah.
Those are not the exact same fixtures that are along Springdale Road.
Decorative, right.
Right, they are not the decorative. Yes.
Yeah, they're the down light. On this drawing, they're noted as PL1Hs.
Mr. Kohler, did their lighting scheme all fall within code?
Yes, it does. And we'll talk about this and the next. When the code says it, it has to be to zero at the property lines, but when we consider this is all part of a unified development, I, I don't really consider going to zero at property lines as relevant.
I would just, you know, with the height of it, it's probably shorter than the original mall.
Oh, yeah, these are not anywhere near the mall, mall height. I'm looking to double-check what we did. We are 22 foot six, which includes our base.
25 foot's the max allowed.
Anything else, Mr. Ferring?
Someone here?
Mr. Westfall?
No questions.
I don't have any questions either. I think it was a good presentation by staff, and, you know, you guys are very well-prepared. I wish everyone came in and was this well-prepared and had all their Ts crossed and Is dotted, so, thank you.
One more question from Mr. Kahler. Am I understanding correctly, there is no current sidewalk along Springdale Road?
Yes, there is.
There is, because when you showed that picture, it didn't seem like it.
Yes, there is a sidewalk. It's integral with the curb. It's not set in like no grass strip or anything, but that's anticipated to stay the same.
Okay, with that one slide that you showed with the light poles on it?
If you see the aerial, you can see the sidewalks in that here. The one with the light pole is probably because of the angle I, well, yeah, there's the sidewalk in front.
All right, so it runs right up to the curb?
Right. It does that on a lot of Colrain Avenue and Springdale Road. I think that's sort of a function of having to acquire right-of-way over the years to widen the road, that they probably only acquired the absolute minimum they had to do.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion among staff? I'd entertain a motion to approve Final Development Plan ZA 2011-04.
I'll make a motion that we approve that. Second.
We need to say what the conditions and variances is.
Right.
You have the?
Staff recommended.
Mrs. Smith, is that your motion with, with the condition, the two conditions and the two variances is recommended by staff?
Yes.
Brody?
It is.
Okay, so we're clear. Clear the roll call, please.
Mr. Ferring?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carried. When do you expect the beginning construction, do you know?
The, probably in June.
Oh, great. What's your, what's your timeline for opening, then? Do you have an idea?
Usually it's a four-month build, and then it takes us a couple of weeks to fix traffic.
So before year-end, then?
Definitely.
Great, all right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. We're going to take a five-minute recess, please.
This is going to be a public hearing on case ZA 1998-01, Discount Tire, 1943 Colrain Avenue.
And staff, please, with your report.
This also comes to you as a final development plan. The difference from the last case is this is considered a major modification to the development plan, therefore, it does require a public hearing. The purpose of the review was to see if the final development plan is in keeping with the approved preliminary development plan and provisions of the Colrain zoning resolution. This application was initiated by Todd Mosher, with R.A. Smith National representing property owner, Cali Properties LLC, and Discount Tires. This was approved as a development plan many years prior to Colrain having jurisdiction over zoning for the site. The most recent modification was the addition of the Armed Forces Recruiting Center, or they call it Career Center now. And there was a modification for the Shomi's Restaurants that was more recent, I believe, but that restaurant was originally approved as a tumbleweed. And when Shomi's went in, they did some modifications to a patio area and some other things that were all minor. The thing that triggers this as a major modification is that it's actually a change of use. We've gone from restaurant to an auto-service type of a operation. The location is shown on the star of this. To the south, there is a bank, north side bank. To the south, there is a bank, north side bank. To the kind of southwest is an assisted care living facility that was approved as a planned residential development, single-family. To the east-west of the former Big Lots, and also to the north, there's some single-family in the Armed Forces Recruiting Center. Across Colrain is Grater's and other shopping center. This is considered a development plan because we have three independent buildings that are on three properties of separate ownership, but they share common access and they share common parking. This is the site plan for the current restaurant. As you can see, it's basically right along the southern property line. The proposed tire, or Discount Tire, would have vehicle circulation going all the way around the building, first the Show Me had no vehicle circulation either on the Colrain Avenue frontage or on the southern side. So that's a little bit different change in traffic pattern from the site. It's a 73, 73, uh, 73, 173 square foot building. This is an aerial photograph of the site. The yellow rectangle is roughly the location of the proposed building, so you can kind of see the difference between the existing Show Me's and where the tire, or Discount Tire would be. We have a lighting plan that was submitted. There was a comment, again, from Hamilton County, that this doesn't meet the required foot candles at the property line at the northern and the western side, but because that's basically the common parking lot, again, we don't necessarily count that as a problem. It does go down to about three-foot candles towards the southern in the property adjacent to the bank. However, the bank also has similar lighting on their own property, so it's a little glim. The only time where I think it's a concern is along the southern property line, you can see this, this one straight section of property line, that is the borderline between this and the assisted living facility. And, actually, I'm going back up to the aerial, maybe even back to the big one. You can see the assisted living facility itself is set quite a distance back from the proposed Discount Tire, and also there's a parking lot between that and some lawn area. There's an area of natural vegetation all along the property line, and one of staff's recommendations is that be maintained. It's a pretty good natural barrier. Our only suggestion is because we do require buffering between residential and commercial, that they plan some additional overgreens. I will note, I will note that's oversight, but we have sort of a table in our zoning resolution that says when certain districts abut other certain districts, there's certain buffering requirements. For some reason, that matrix does not include the planned residential district. I don't know if that was a oversight or what, but technically there is no requirement, although there is a requirement for every other residential district that we have on books. So I would still suggest a hearing to maintain some buffering there. This is the front and back view of the building. The top view is what would be facing Colrain Avenue, although it does face it, it's somewhat of an angle. You can see on the sides, there are two awnings. That is the location of the doors. Our zoning resolution requires that there be a pedestrian entrance on the street front of the building, and this building does not have one. I've talked to the applicant, and he's here tonight to speak to the issue, that this is somewhat a standardized layout for them, and they would prefer not to have the front entry, although there is parking directly out to the front of the building. We'll look at that later as well. Also, the bottom picture shows an overhead door, just to note that is where they receive their deliveries, and they just receive deliveries by semi-trucks. The top view on this is the sign that would face the Big Lots parking lot. The bottom one would face the north side bank. It's the bottom, uh, the south elevation that has the overhead service bays, and they can service up to six cars in those bays. They're each double-wide bays. So the vehicle traffic entering and exiting the building is on the south side of the property. There's no vehicle access on the north side of the property. They are proposing a sign on the north elevation as well, which is not a street-fronting side. I did talk to Ms. LaCount about this. Both of those signs are 72 square feet each. The building facing Colrain Avenue is the narrow width of the building and is only 60 feet wide. So each, but each of these signs are not non-conforming. The one facing Colrain is non-conforming because it's oversized. This one is also additional size, and it is not facing a street front. What we saw, though, in the last plan in developments, there is some flexibility if zoning commission chooses to grant it, to allow flexibility for multiple sites in the building, although we usually adhere to whatever their total eligible time allowance is when doing that. This is the floor plan, showing the service bays, sales area, storage area. We have a little bit of a difference between the Hamilton County review on this and my review. There's a mess made up over the service bays used for, it's almost like storage racks for the tires. They counted that as floor area and calculated their parking requirement based on that as floor area. I, I didn't do that, so we came up with different parking calculations. I don't know if it makes a whole lot of difference, the one way or the other, but we'll get into that with the parking. That kind of shows the upper floor area. The issues on this are somewhat multiple. The, the planned development requires 15% common open space within the development. That's true of all developments, and I'm not sure what, in residential developments, common open space are usually things like recreational amenities or, you know, things that are used commonly. I'm not sure what common open space translates into for planned developments traditionally in Colrain, but this doesn't seem to meet that. Probably the bigger, or the more concrete issue, literally, is that we have a maximum impervious surface area of 75%. The proposed is 77%, so they're 2% over their maximum amount of area. That equates, based on this lot size, to 871 square feet of either paved area, presumably paved area, that would need to be reduced in order to meet that standard. Also, we require 25 parking spaces with a maximum allowance for 28 spaces, and there are 35 spaces provided. This would require a variance for additional seven spaces. There's another issue somewhat at play with this development. The former Big Lots is empty, and we have good reason to believe that there is a minimum lease for that building for a fitness center. The parking calculations are different for retail versus fitness center, and fitness centers require five parking spaces per thousand square feet. Retail is four. So the fitness center is going to require more parking than what would be calculated for Big Lots. I did the calculations. Big Lots fortunately was built overparted, as most of, I think, Colrain's developments were done, but still comes in slightly under the five per thousand square feet, in that this is all cross-access easements. I would encourage granting of a variance to allow the parking that they're showing on the plan, because there may be a tighter need for parking in the future. Number three, the customer entry is required to be on the front. They're proposing it on the site. This should either be moved to the front, or it would require a variance. There's a requirement that a pedestrian sidewalk be connecting the parking area with the sidewalk on Colrain Avenue. In this case, it would be a fairly short sidewalk, that it would run alongside the main entry drive. The reason for this is obviously pedestrians are coming off the street, they're not blocking in traffic in order to get to the parking lot or to these buildings. I've talked briefly about the sign area. 60 square foot is the maximum. They're proposing two at 72 and a half square feet, which is not permitted. Staff's recommendation is complying with the maximum sign area. Also, the maximum sign area for a monument sign, is that one I want? Yes. Is based on the street frontage, and based on their street frontage, they're allowed 40, let's see, a maximum of 49 feet, square feet per side, and a maximum height of 15 feet. They did not submit sign details with this plan. However, there's space allowed for that. I would ask that you allow staff to approve the monument sign for this building, provided that they need the square footage. The height will set back all of the requirements for a monument sign. So recommendation for this is for approval with the following conditions and variances. The conditions is compliance with the maximum lock coverage requirement of 75%. Second, sidewalk connecting Colrain Avenue to the parking lot. Third, wall signs comply with the 60 square foot maximum with flexibility to place signs on the north side of the building. The details be submitted for administrative approval on the monument sign. The customer entry door be provided facing Colrain Avenue. Number six, the existing vegetation between the proposed site and the PPR, the system will be left undisturbed and enhanced with evergreen trees. And seven, that businesses be conducted in such a way that noise is contained within the building and not cause a disturbance to neighbors, properties. Colrain's zoning code does not have a provision for noise. That's basically dealt with police matter or disturbing of peace matter, different communities, including zoning, some of the police method, but still, the concern we had internally was that they're probably using air wrenches and so forth, both tires on, they come off. They do make some noise. There is a bank right next door, quite distant. There is a residential development. The idea is that they use some sort of a sound buffering, or that they keep the doors closed, bay doors closed, while they're operating that kind of equipment, so it doesn't cause a problem. I would like to document that, just so it does become a problem, not only is it become a disturbing of peace, it also becomes a something issue in type of the development plan. And the variance is that up to seven parking spaces be allowed over the maximum allowance. That is the staff recommendation. This is a public hearing. We've notified all the surrounding property owners with regard to this. I did get a call from one of the people behind Big Lots. They had a concern about the condition of the privacy fence behind Big Lots. We'll treat that probably as a property maintenance issue, and then there are a whole nother set of issues that may come up when that building gets reoccupied.
But that's completely independent of this application?
Yeah, I didn't consider that particularly relevant, but it was the only call that I've received.
Thank you.
The applicant is also here with us to sit down.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mosher, would you like to come up and make a presentation, please?
Good evening. Todd Mosher, R.A. Smith National, representing Discount Tire and Hallie Properties. Yeah, Marty gave a very comprehensive overview of everything, and there are a number of conditions that have been recommended that I, I think that we can agree to, and there was, there was a few of them that we would want to discuss, to be fair. So, I guess we'll just kind of take them one at, one at a time as they show up on the, on the screen there. The first one, the 75%, so the, right now, the lot coverage is somewhere in the neighborhood of 80%, and our plan shows us increasing the pervious area, the green space, to a 77% ratio. I was also unclear about the 75% as it affects, you know, in the, in the PDB and whatnot, but when Marty and I looked at the plans, it, it's, it's very difficult to, without the loss of parking spaces as proposed, to find room to add 871 square feet or whatever that is. So, I guess, you know, what I would say is that we would look at the plans closely with staff to see where we could possibly add some green space, but I don't know that we could guarantee we can get to the 75% number without, without the reduction in, in the parking, which we don't want to do either, and I understand from the Big Lots perspective, they may need those as well. So I, I was hoping maybe to modify that condition in some way where, and, and one, one thing I would, I should say this too. One, one thing that I would propose is on the north side of the building, there's a, there's a five-foot gravel strip along the, the main entry drive that comes back to the Big Lots building, and it's somewhat of a compromise, I guess, for the condition of allowing us to go slightly greater than the 75% is, we could plant that area rather than having the gravel mulch in there. We could, we could put some sort of foundation plantings in there, perennials and maybe some flowering shrubs along that north edge of the building, kind of ground it a bit with landscaping rather than...
Where exactly are you?
Marty.
Just so we're all clear.
Yeah, I was going to say, Marty, can you point to that area?
Come on, here, right.
You're there.
It's on the top right.
There you go.
There, this area.
There.
Strip. You have a landscape plan in your packet that calls that gravel mulch, and I did talk to the applicant. Just impression-wise, we have a lot of paved area on this site, and at least in my mind, having some vegetative foundation plantings along this building would go a long way to kind of greening that up, so it's not just pavement running straight into the building.
So, so that would be, so on that item, that's my, that would be my proposal, allow us some flexibility, go up to the 77%. We'll work with staff to reduce that to the 75, but in, in any case, we will, we will green that edge of the building. we will green that edge of the building. So that's, that's my proposal for your consideration on that one. On this, on the next one, so connecting the sidewalk to the street is not a problem. From the building to the public sidewalk, we will do that. The wall sign discussion, we, we, the building is slightly rotated from Colerain, so we really have the short end of the building faces Colerain for the most part, but the, what I call the backside of, the normal backside of our building also has exposure to Colerain Avenue just because of the orientation of the site. And this also leads to that door discussion, which we'll get to, you know, in a moment. But I guess, I guess, you know, we really feel, you know, not unlike the other shopping centers and multi-use areas in town where buildings have signs on multiple sides where they face other public areas and driveways, we really feel like we need to have that sign on the north side. Plus, I think in elevation view, it really doesn't look bad. I mean, it actually kind of makes the back of the building look more like the front of the building. So I think visually, you know, it makes, it makes that side of the building look a little more like, like a storefront rather than the back of the building. So, but what I would say is that, again, we're trying to work through a compromise. On the front of the building, we could reduce that sign on the front, the one that's non-compliant from seventy-two square feet, I think, with your calculation. I think, I think they're seventy-fives, but we could reduce that down to sixty square feet. It'd be a, what that would amount to is reducing the letter size by three inches, and we actually have those signs pre-manufactured. So that's sort of our Plan B.
Can I interrupt you for a minute, just because we're on signage? Are you, is there an intention to also include a monument sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is shown on the plan again, where's my arrow? If it's right in this location.
Right. It's set back pretty considerably. I think the minimum setback is ten feet, but I think in this case, it's more than that because of the easements that are there.
There's a detention on utilities.
Utility easements. But yes, to answer your question, we're gonna have a amendment. So anyway, so what my proposal would be, we would reduce the one on the, on the east side of the building to sixty feet if we could, but if we could maintain the one on the north side of the building as a request for variation to allow for that flexibility. And then kind of rolling into the door thing, I did talk to the, my client and unfortunately, we can't put that door on the front of the building. They just, they can't do it. But, but I would say that because the building is rotated in a way that sort of what I'm calling the north side of the building actually does have a door on it. It, it does face the public way. It's not as directly facing as the one that, as it would be if it were on the, on the east facade, but I don't know if that would request, I mean, I don't know if that would require, excuse me, a variance for that location of the door because it does sort of technically, you can see it from the street, but, so I'll let you work with that one, but that, that one, we just can't accommodate. And on the, the buffer with the evergreens, we're happy to add those. We're gonna maintain what's there. We had planned to do that anyway. And then on the noise condition, I think we're fine with that. I mean, we do use, we, we do have very modern equipment. It does have a sort of a buffer on, on the guns themselves, so they really aren't audible for, you know, at any distance at all away from the building. And also I'll point out that our business hours are only till six o'clock at night. So, and we're closed on Sunday. So, you know, what likelihood of it really bothering somebody, pretty, fairly unlikely.
What are the typical times that the semis would be making deliveries?
They were during, during business hours.
Okay, not overnight or, okay.
Yeah, there's nobody in the building overnight. It's locked up.
Okay.
And that, that concludes my request.
Okay, thank you.
If you have any questions.
I'm sure we will.
Can I move? I was reading on my PowerPoint, but there is one condition that I have in the staff notes that I failed to put in the PowerPoint, and that's the two ornamental lights being installed on the behind the sidewalk on Colerain. And that's in keeping with the same lines that we just talked about here first, financially.
Is, is that acceptable? The two decorative?
Yeah, I think, I think in concept there, there's a, it's hard to describe, but there's a, there's a, the lot line in the front of the property along Colerain, for whatever reason, there was a, there was a right-of-way taking at some point and it, the lot line doesn't necessarily follow the sidewalk. It kind of comes in to the site. So if we did two lights, one at the northern end of our frontage and one at the southern end of our frontage, roughly sixty feet apart, the one on the north end was gonna be, you know, in a normal place, adjacent to the sidewalk, which is the intention. And the one that would be south, if we can get it in the, if the state will allow us to place that light in the right-of-way, it's a private light, because I think it hooks up to our system. So I don't know if that's gonna work, but we would be glad to do that. If not, it would, the light would have to come in, it would be sort of in our detention easement. I'm not sure that that would be possible either. So I guess what I would say is that I think we can get one light in for sure. I'm not sure about the second because there's a few other determining factors in whether or not that could be placed.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have anyone here that would like to speak on this issue? Okay. I'll close the public address, or close the public hearing then.
Second that?
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Mrs. Smith, do you have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
Yes. Can you tell me a little bit about the dumpsters and where they're located?
Absolutely. Marty, is there any way you could show the site layout? So on the, on the southern end of the parking lot, you'll see, there's actually structures shown in the parking spaces. There you go. Thank you. So what we have, it's actually, it's a masonry enclosure. It's designed to match the materials of the building. It has metal, metal, you know, commercial grade gates on it and, and we actually provide two separate chambers in there. One is for regular trash and one is for recycling bin. So we, one side for each.
Great. How do you dispose of it? I mean, does Ronkey come pick up something or, or is there another way you can get rid of your trash?
Well, we will contract, it's just a commercial waste pickup. We'll contract that and they'll, they'll pick up the normal interval for our business, which...
Any particular hour?
What's that?
Any particular hours that the pickup come like? My garbage day is on Friday.
I, I, I don't think that they have any, I don't think that, I think you can maybe arrange for certain days, but I think that it's, it's a private contract, so I think it's negotiable.
The reason I ask is because there's another noise issue if a big truck is gonna be coming in to remove the dumpster or whatever you have for disposal. And that would be, to me, a concern of the residents and their my businesses in terms of noise.
Okay. Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, I mean, it's not gonna be in the middle of the night. I wouldn't guess. So I mean, I think that that, if you wanted to, I mean, I understand the concern. I mean, we can just say that, you know, the trash pickup would be during, during the day.
I think that's something the store manager and the waste disposal company can probably work out.
Well, again, I'm concerned with the residents and additional noise since there's a question now about noise and buffering that noise.
Right. Well, also, the, the orientation of it is facing away from the residential, it's facing north. So when the, when the gates are open and there's activity, it's, there is a masonry wall that would be on the backside of it, so they'll, should help, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Grotty?
I noticed, sir, on your layout for the building itself, there's a dead tire storage room. Would there ever at any time be dead tires stored outside or in that dumpster area?
No, actually, that's, that's the exact purpose of that room. It's a, we, they'll contract with a licensed recycling company. They'll come pick those up on a regular basis and they're, they're kept within the building and never outside.
Okay. And same way, looking at the layout, the floor layout, where do you anticipate most of your customer traffic coming in, the north door or the south door?
The south, the south door. Yeah, absolutely. That, just the normal way that showroom works, that's, that's, that's the way they set up the displays inside, so when you come in, the tire displays and where the advertisements are facing as you come in that door.
It kind of surprised me. I thought you would have flipped it because as people drive off of Colerain Avenue, they've gotta look for where they think is the, would be your consideration of the main entrance?
I don't disagree with you. There's, but we had at one time considered flipping the building where that door would face north, but the concern was of safety with people zipping in and out, getting to the Big Lots building or whatever that's gonna become. They would have to cross that, that busy traffic aisle there, so that's the way, that's why it's the way it is.
So I would assume that once a person's car is finished, then they're gonna be accessing it on that south side also?
Yes. The associates would pull it out of the installation area and they, they would park it in that, probably in that southern row along the property line on the south. Yeah.
Mr. Ferry?
I got a couple. On the, going back to the parking, in the green space, we're over on parking right now, right? By, how many spaces?
Seven.
Seven. And we need more green space. Each parking spot's about close to two hundred square feet. So if you give up a couple parking spaces and do the gravel deal, I think you can get there reasonably. Couple spaces. We're bending on a bunch of items here. The signage also, I have no problem with the square footage of it, but you're asking to do it on the front of the building and the side of the building. The door issue? You say you can't do anything with a door issue.
Right.
Is there a reason for that?
Just from corporate, they, it's the way their store functions, I, that's an operational thing. I just, I asked the question and they said absolutely, they can't do that.
When I look at those doors right there in this building, those can be two windows or two doors. Right now, they're windows. It's not a big deal to put the doors in the front of the building.
I understand what you're saying, but that's the direction I've been given.
We were seven, what you said, we were seven spaces over and we were only two percent off on green space. But then you said eighty percent, you were at eighty percent?
No, what I, I probably didn't say that properly. The current site, the way it is out there now with the restaurant, is eighty percent covered.
But this is at seventy-seven and we need seventy-five, so a couple spaces will get you there. So. Sound, yeah, I'm concerned with the air guns, but I know the new, the new equipment does, they have mufflers and stuff, and it's not nearly the issue that it was before. You're closed at six o'clock. Dumpsters, you're sort of at Ronkey's discretion on that. I know because I have them here and they're gonna give you that route. And if it's on Tuesday, they're gonna say they're gonna be empty by Wednesday morning. It may be eight o'clock, it may be three in the morning. So, but even then, I don't think it's that big an issue. They're gonna have to eat the other dumpsters in those other buildings, probably on the same route anyhow, so you're not gonna make any difference. Sidewalks, you know, you can do that very easily, sidewalks. Yeah, I guess the biggest issue is just the signage in the, in the front door. Westfall?
The seventy-five percent, seventy-seven percent impervious surface, I'm not sure I'm real worried about that. That's not really a big deal. Whatever my colleagues want, I guess it'll be okay. I like business hour deliveries of your products. Can't read that. I wrote that and can't read it. Ornamental lights, I would hope you would try to do everything you could to get those because that's gonna run all the way up, up the street. And I think that, I like those lights, you know, and I, and I'm sure you will do everything you can. And the noise reduction, I know new, I like my colleagues, I know the new equipment is muffled and it does make that, what do we call it, whiny noise that the starter on my Chrysler makes. I think everything else, the signage, I don't know what to think about that. I'm gonna, by the time it comes time, I'll know what I wanna do. Other than that, it looks okay to me. I don't have any problems with it.
I kind of agree with Mr. Westfall, seventy-five, seventy-seven percent to me. I think we're splitting hairs. I think a good compromise if, if we approve the seventy-seven percent is, is to do the landscaping, the additional landscaping that we kind of talked about. I think it'd make your store look better anyway. The doors don't bother me. This, this building kind of sits kind of a little awkwardly on this lot and if that's your store prototype and that's how your merchandising and, and displays are all designed, I get that, you know? You do that for, so someone can go in a store here, they can go into one in Columbus, so they can go into one in Indianapolis and they all look the same and that makes sense to me. And I mean, that's what merchandising is all about, so I don't have an issue there. The seven parking spaces don't bother me, especially if we're gonna run into potential issues with the new occupant of the former Big Lots because it is all or somewhat shared Signage, I'm okay with giving you the two sides. I would like to see you reduce the one side to the sixty square feet. It sounds like you already have standard lettering that'll accomplish that, so.
Yes.
I, I, we definitely want you to keep the, the current buffer, vegetation buffer between, between your, your lot and the, and the residential plan district or, what am I trying to say? The home that's there, so. Additional trees would be great, evergreen trees.
Sure.
The ornamental signs, you know, I get what you're saying. If, if they're not gonna look right or you can't get one in the right-of-way, it might not make sense. And I don't know if just one makes sense. I can't envision it, but I'd say we can put it in here and you guys can work together and, and if you can't, if you can't do it, you can't do it. I mean, but, but I think your best attempt would be, would be good.
Yeah.
Noise, yeah, the noise doesn't, doesn't give me any issues. I think that's been addressed, so. I think it's just up to us to, as a board, craft a, a good motion that incorporates all of these factors and whether we come to agreement on them or not and can pass a motion, so. I think at this point, we'll, we'll close, we'll close the, the hearing of this and we'll discuss it as a board and we'll come up with a motion and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I need a motion to close the hearing?
So, my second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Okay. Guys, what do you think? Can we agree on the seventy-seven percent versus seventy-five?
I'm okay with that. Sounds like everybody is.
Can we agree on the additional parking spaces? Mr. Ferry, he seems to have more.
Yeah, I was just throwing it up there as a...
As a way to get to more green space?
Because I think, you know, the landscaping deal, was that for a terminal?
Yeah.
Already landscaping, just a different material.
I think it's more vegetation though than...
Yeah, but I'm saying as far as, are you looking at it as green space or?
I don't think it's green space, but. So we okay then on, on the parking?
Fine with it.
Am I hearing in lieu of needing the 77, 75% impervious area that you're willing to accept the landscape strip on the north side of the building?
Correct.
Correct.
That would be great if you could capture these. Signage, I, I guess I've let my opinion be known. I mean, would it, where are you guys at with the signage?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. So if we reduce the one to 60 feet?
The other one, like is? The one on the front is 60 feet.
60 feet.
Okay. And the one on the side of the building or what they're calling the side of the building?
72 square feet, right?
Mr. Moser, can we reduce both signs to 60 square feet? Would that, would that create any issues? I mean, I agree with you that having the sign on the other side, I think it makes the building look better with the sign.
Well, I guess what I would say is we're at your mercy, but that, that side of the building is 128 feet long.
Bigger side, right.
And the sign is like 2% of-
Open it too.
Yeah. So that's-
Okay. So 60 square foot on the front facing Colrain and 72 on the-
72, I mean, yeah, okay.
Maintain the existing vegetation, add some, add some trees, the lights.
Ornamental lights, do your best on the ornamental lights.
Who, who can craft this into a, a meaningful motion? Will we give it a shot?
I'll give it a shot.
Okay.
One, one more thing. Do we deal with the noise reduction?
Dead end, we-
They're closed at six o'clock.
They're closed at six o'clock.
To, to me, it's a non-issue because of their, their business hours. I mean, we can't, I know you're concerned with the garbage pickup, but I don't think there's any way-
Not just the garbage pickup, the sound, the different sounds that come from the business. The delivery truck, the semi truck.
If those all happen during business hours though, I, I don't, I don't see an issue.
You don't think that that might disturb nearby people, like the bank, like the residents that's, that's nearby?
There's other businesses along Colrain that have the same deliveries and same issues. I mean-
Well, that, that might be true, but are they the same type of noise?
I, I can't answer that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I like, I like the fact that they, they're only open till six because you've got pretty heavy traffic until six o'clock anyway. So I think it'd drown out most any noise they, they'd have.
On the opposite side of the bank, you have a building supply place that has trucks and-
Coming in there all day, all day long, yeah.
Right.
Plus the recommendation that staff has made in our written report here, it doesn't specify certain noise reduction items. It just says that ample measures being incorporated in. So it's still up for grabs as to what it might be.
Right.
If I'm reading that correctly.
Yes.
You are.
That's the way I see it.
Since we have no zoning specific measurable standards, I'm simply phrasing it that way in case we receive complaints that we can treat it both from the zoning and disturbing the piece.
The workers will just have to hold a pillow around-
That might work. So are we ready, Joe?
Give it a shot, Tom.
I make a motion that we accept the, the final development plan, major amendment for ZA 199801, discount tires at 9343, Colrain Avenue, with the following conditions. One, oh no, we're not, we're okay with, that one, that the maximum impervious area can be, be allowed to be 77% rather than 75. That the variance, and variance be granted to allow for seven additional parking spaces and that they be shared with the, whatever goes into the big lots building. Number three, that the wall signs, the one on the Colrain side be 72 square, 60 square feet. And the one on the, like, north side of the building be, be 72 square feet for additional visibility. That the existing vegetation along the common property line with the assisted living development be left undisturbed or be enhanced through the planting of evergreen trees. That two ornamental lights, that serious attempts be made to get two ornamental lights installed behind the sidewalk on Colrain spaced 60 feet apart. That the, Africa work with staff to try to get that done. That ample noise reduction measures be incorporated into the plan so as not to disturb the bank and the assisted living, assisted living facility to the south of the property line and opposite the service bay doors. That a pedestrian walkway should be installed from the front of the building to the existing public sidewalk on Colrain. And that there be two variances granted. One, that the illumination level be permitted to exceed the .5 foot candles along the northern and western property lines internal to the commercial development. And at the minimum, 20 foot wide buffer yard shall be permitted adjacent to the PDR multifamily site to the south where the 40 foot buffer yard is required. And that a 10 foot wide buffers is permitted adjacent to the B1 portion of the site to the south where 30 foot buffer is required, provided that all buffer areas include landscape materials consistent with the zoning requirement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Ferring?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. She carries. I'll ask the same question. What, what's your approximate timeline for construction and opening?
That would be, it's a good question. It would be, I don't know the answer.
Okay.
It's probably, more likely their construction start towards the end of this year.
Okay. Three, three to four months to build?
Actually, I think a lot of food projects are pretty vulnerable, structure.
Really?
Okay. The shed needs to close for a while?
Yeah. Thank you.
We're going to miss that tree.
I wonder what happened to the tree. All right. Next on the agenda, informal concept reviews. We have none. Old business, we have none. New business, appears to be none. Administration, comprehensive plan, task force, volunteers. That sounds, that's interesting. Yeah, ominous. There you go.
I understand that the updated comp plan started sometime last spring. We've had some staff changeovers and the process was interrupted. There were some public forums and I do have some notes from those. Typically, when this type of a plan is done, there is some sort of an oversight committee that works along with staff to serve as informed people who can help with understanding context of different things in the county or township. And also just be sort of a reality check board as we go through the phases of a comprehensive plan. What I would like to do is set up this oversight board to have representatives of various factions throughout the community, being things like maybe Chamber of Commerce, Board of Education, neighborhood interest groups, whatever, athletic groups, so forth. I've already posed this to Board of Zoning Appeals just because they met before you and got two volunteers from that group. I would like to get two volunteers from Zoning Commission as well to work with this.
Would I help write that for you?
Oh, great.
So I would like to volunteer.
Yeah. The, the purpose of this group also is to provide periodic feedback to the Zoning Commission. Zoning Commission is going to be as a whole, very much involved in this process because it has to be approved by Hamilton County Planning Commission, by this Zoning Commission, and also by the Township Trustees to be an effective plan. So I would anticipate that the steering committee would report periodically on progress back to the Zoning Commission, just so you're kept in the information as to where it's going. The reason why I asked for two is that anytime we have a meeting of three people to conduct public business on this board, it becomes a public meeting. We have to publish agendas and do all that kind of stuff. Not that we're avoiding it, but with the various boards, with Board of Zoning Appeals, this board, it would be helpful to keep it somewhat informal. But also keep in mind that if the public wants to attend these meetings, they're more than welcome to attend. I foresee this group having a size maybe 14 at max. Anytime you get 12 or more, the group dynamics start to diminish. And so it's difficult to be selective and find 14 people who can accurately represent a cross-section of the township. But that's what we're attempting to do. So again, two people, Mr. Westfall has volunteered.
How often do they do it?
I foresee about monthly.
Evenings?
Probably evenings because most people have commitments during the day.
Of course, the evening will be more than that. If you sit in the evening, it'll be more than that.
Yeah.
Then you might have to meet weekly for two, three weeks to get five, two.
Correct.
I'll do it.
Great.
Mr. Ferring and Mr. Westfall are volunteers.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Any announcements?
All right.
Our next meeting will be Tuesday, April 19th, 2016. And I will adjourn, or I guess I need a motion to adjourn.
So may I.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.